I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, let's pray. Dear Father God, we just come to you just to pause and just say thank you, Lord, for your mercy. Thank you for your grace and just thank you for your sovereignty, Lord. Thank you for your blessings and just the safety and protection that you provide for our administration, our staff and our wider community. Lord, we just lift you up. We ask, Lord, that we acknowledge your presence here tonight and that we acknowledge the great experience that we have two new board members in Laurel. And we just appreciate her and her family's support. We just pray, God, that you just guide us today. Your Spirit lead us and direct us. And all things we do and say are to glorify you. It's in your name we pray.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
We're gonna do things a little out of order this evening. First of all, it's great to see everybody. It's always good to know that nobody was armed when they came into the building because I get real nervous when I see a mob. I don't know why. This time, we're going to give the oath of office to Mr. Brad Hill and to Mrs. Laura Donaway. If y'all would stand at this time and raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Same time or just different?
Same time. Here we go. "In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas," in, go ahead and repeat, "in the name..."
In the name.
"...and by the authority of the State of Texas..."
Authority of the State of Texas.
"Aye."
Aye.
Aye, Laura Donaway.
Brad Hill.
"Do solemnly swear..."
Do solemnly swear.
"...that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office..."
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
"...of place..."
Of place one.
"...of the State of Texas..."
The State of Texas.
"...and will, to the best of my ability..."
And will, to the best of my ability.
"...preserve, protect, and defend..."
Preserve, protect, and defend.
"...the Constitution and laws of the United States..."
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
"...and of this state..."
And of this state.
"...so help me God."
So help me God.
Congratulations. At this point, we're gonna ask Mr. Pictures, oh, picture now? Let's do picture now. Come on. I think the whole audience is gonna come up.
We can move.
I think, so who all do you?
Y'all come on. Everybody, all the people.
I think you had enough votes in here to win the election. You invited everybody that voted for you. Now, everybody knows Tracey Broadstreet's husband takes pictures for a living. There's a reason he's not taking it tonight. I'm just saying, they're blurry. He didn't vote for her either. Keep coming, keep coming.
Hey, you might have to do some levels. Okay, ready? One, two, three. One more, one, two, three.
So I guess the people that didn't come up, didn't vote for, is that what y'all, the dissenters?
Hey, I can take a picture of Brad in there.
Nobody voted for him.
No, I think everybody.
Okay, thank y'all for coming. You don't have to stay for the whole rodeo, but... At this point, we're gonna have Mr. Besen preside over the board until we've elected a president.
Okay, at this point, I open the floor for nominations for president.
I'll move and nominate Miller Lautermelt for president.
Miller Lautermelt. Now, let's do it here. Second?
Second.
We have a second out here. Any other nominations? Is there a motion that nomination cease and Miller be elected by acclamation?
I move nomination cease.
And then Miller be, do I have a second on that?
A second.
Congratulations, Miller Lautermelt for president.
Yes.
You're it.
Okay, I'm gonna open the floor for nominations for our president.
I will make a motion to nominate Brad Hill as president.
For second.
Are there any other nominations? Is there a motion to cease nominations and elect Brad by acclamation?
I move the nomination cease and elect Brad by acclamation. A second.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, congratulations. And I'm going to open the floor for nominations for secretary.
I move Cameron Wiley. I nominate Cameron Wiley.
Are there any nominations? Okay, is there a motion for nominations to cease and for Cameron to be elected by acclamation?
I'll move what you just said.
I'll say again.
Okay, all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, congratulations. Okay.
Good job.
Will you please take a roll now? Have you taken a roll? Perfect, thank you. So, everyone, welcome to tonight's board meeting. Do we have anybody? Alright, then we will move on.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. First question to Adam is to approve the previous minutes. If nobody has any changes, we'll approve them as they are presented.
Right.
Alright, we're moving on. Consent agenda.
Okay, consent agenda.
Page 11 with our bills. You on this first page point out, of course, the Emily Radiator, we had a, just, it's kind of higher dollar mouse. So there was a motor assembly involved in that. That took a big chunk of, a good portion of that 7,800 there. I wanted to point out that we have American Express listed there for 9,200. There was a bus refund for purchase. And that's not actually been there, of course, the car was used for that. And then C4 fuels down towards the bottom. I listed the date of those tickets, but that is for, you know, which is what we average typically for refills on that.
Before we go on, I know the choir in mind want to know, but we're continuing with our attorney. It has become a long drawn out process and we'll continue to work with them to recoup our damages that we've done.
Okay, on the next page, page 12, synergy technology. There were 12 multi-touch displays purchased. The description says new line handles there. So that was 12. I don't know, Tony? Okay, no. I don't know where those exactly were.
Yeah, I'm not sure where they, I think they were.
No, it was 12 of them. That's right, okay. That roofing repair that was at our West Junior High, I'm gonna be K-Hanny. Page 13, there was a water pump replaced that Kirby and I had a chance to ask you to move.
Right, so our fluid water pump dislodged from the bracket that holds it. It went to the bottom of the lake, so we had to retrieve it, put it back together on there.
Well, it was stolen.
It was stolen. We had that happen too, the wiring, but this time it just sank, but we retrieved it, rebuilt it. Now it's working again.
Was that the bottom of the lake?
Huh?
It was.
It was. It actually moved towards the dam. We had to look for it.
Did you just say?
Rough water.
I didn't find it. I'm sorry, I'm just kidding. I think the company.
They did. They found it with a fish finder and a trash hood located.
Midway Plumbing, there were 25 toilets. I feel like that was at the stadium.
Yeah, we reworked most of the stadium toilets the last few, we haven't done that several years.
Yes, so that was that. I split it out just because that one was one more sandal on there. And the other was just some normal repairs at the high school and that East Elementary. Page 14, some instruments were purchased for into music. So a little higher than our normal repairs and supplies monthly. And then RW Services, there were two warmers purchased, but we actually received an equipment assistance award for that, which covered those. And then, of course, we have our normal repairs. I mean, I feel like there's just constantly something. Older kitchens and stuff, equipment. Page 15, tech summer builders, that fencing that's listed, the larger amount of 36,000. That is at the ECC, West Elementary, Western Interstate, West Junior High.
Exterior doors, that's the complete package on our exterior doors there.
And then Warren Katz, of course, we did have a large repair on the generator at the high school. The rest, of course, like on page 15, it starts over. There's a bit of a space. And then is our credit card purchases going down through page 17. There are any other questions on those?
Hi, Roll. I have to save it on here.
I should have caught that.
Yeah.
I didn't see it last month and forgot to ask in this month, so.
It's probably my filter when I pull it. I typically leave it out for other things, so.
Yeah, yeah. Just FYI.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'll get you an update on that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thanks. Not to rewind a little bit, Mr. Besen, how many buses were affected again from that gas? Do you have to go back?
I believe it was 30 something that we had topped off, you know? Not all of them had even pulled out of the yard, but had some amount of that fuel in there. Of course, it was a diluted amount, so the degree of how it affected a bus varied.
Lots of buses got.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Before, page 18 starts our supplemental bills. The only one I did want to point out, of course, we have the large, our allocation fee, which is a quarterly fee we pay to Central Praezel District. And of course, Taylor Electric is listed again. That was our May bill. Any other questions? Cash balance? And back to the loan star investment, we are earning the 4.46%. And then, just like we've been saying the past few months, we are getting kind of into our lower overall balance months here. So, pretty comparable to last May. Maybe a little lower there.
And that catch-up thing comes at the end of the summer?
September.
September, okay.
September 20th.
I've read before.
Expense report. I believe, we've had some conversations, but of course, our security is still up. We just had more in the 52. Stage 51, just with all the buildings and different things we've been doing, of course, a lot has been coded to that function 51.
What percent do you think of this was covered in the grants?
296,000.
96,000 was in the last grant, so we're, the other day, we were at about 300, a little over 300,000, 330, wasn't it? This last bill, like 330, so all but about 40,000, so I'm making... We still have some up and coming, but we have some more money coming in September 1st. We signed the bar, so we'll pick up a little bit of that off.
Any other questions on that one? Revenue report, page 22. Line there, of course, our interest is up where we had it. And then, the only ones that are a little, the percentage is high is, of course, the things that weren't necessarily planned for, such as the gifts. And then we have the sponsorship, Andy Jenny, 5749 area, that he's been working on. Any other questions?
What is, I'm sending 15 transfer into this?
A food service, that's our food service, yes, sorry.
Gotcha, okay.
So maybe describe what that, what that is and why it looks like that, the transfers and the food service.
So, well, this is our general fine. It's in a different fund, in Fund 240. And so as we pay out there, we're transferring that over.
Okay.
So in and out.
It just has to be kept in a different fund for accounting purposes.
Yeah, everything goes into two, any food service related, it goes into two.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that the one that has the balance again?
That's the goal. That is the goal. As you know, food costs have been crazy and we're working on trying to come up with our price for school lunches and breakfasts for next year. And, you know, the Department of Ag gives us some guidelines that we've got to stay with also. So we're trying to grapple with that right now, so, but I do think there's gonna be an increase in lunch prices. Yeah, we'll bring that to you next month.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy.
I move we pay the bills.
Second.
On to her. Alright, moving on to our favorite.
Everybody's favorite. Everybody wants to be the delegate or the alternate.
I did it last year. I did the alternate.
You did it last year.
I get it, my rookie here.
It's hard to hide when you're exposed on the other side.
It's normal, rookie.
So tell her what that entails.
If you sit in that spot, you have to go do it.
So it's a delegate, our Tasby delegate is someone that goes to the, at the convention. They go and they are basically our voting representative for all things Tasby. It's actually pretty interesting. You learn the ins and outs of people that go and advocate for the schools and the school boards and it's, I mean, you actually learn quite a bit, so.
It's kind of common too.
Yeah, it gets a little, some of them be a little fiery and that, it's funny.
And you do, obviously, you need to know that you are going to the convention before you take that one, so.
So it's October, I mean, September 29th to October 1st, so. I heard them.
I heard them.
Okay, they're going with you.
We gotta have an alternate, just in case something happens and you can't make it.
You're not positive you're gonna be there, right?
Right.
Yes.
I have a group that gives you on October 1st.
I'll plan on going again this year to conference. I'll be the alternate.
Okay.
Okay, somebody needs to.
Make a motion.
Make a motion.
I make a motion that we select Andy Stanton as our delegate and Brad Hill as our alternate delegate for the Tasby Convention. September 29th, you walk over first.
Second.
Okay, on paper?
Second.
Okay, here we go. Yay. Okay. Okay, we're moving on to public input for title funds.
Each year, we're required to get public input on title funds. In the past, we've used title monies on remedial reading programs, supplement payroll costs, staff development, and purchase supplies. And so at this time, we ask for public input if there's any other thoughts on this.
Do we have anyone? Okay. Hey, it will now move on to public input of our SR3 funds and continuity of our services.
Yeah, so all this is related, you know, it seems like we're still dealing with the after effects of COVID. And this is all related to COVID, these SR3 funds. There's some school districts that are still having trouble spending all that money. So we didn't get near as much and it was easier to spend. And so we have done that. Catherine and Carol are continuing to fill out reports even though we've spent it. So they continue to do that. And also, the continuity of services plan. We created the plan so we could have, continue to deliver services to the kids in an emergency situation like we had with COVID. And so now, it is not actually in effect right now. Mr. Besen, do you have any comments on? I mean, if we, if we had something come up like we did then.
We still have that plan available in our emergency operation plan, but the COVID declaration's not gonna be re-signed, you know?
That's right.
Tomorrow, I think, or the next day.
So if there was anybody that had input, like I say, it'd be nice if we needed input on how to spend funds. That's not the issue. But any comments on our continuity of services plan? So, you know, those things initially included things like the mask mandate, it included the testing, all those different things that the distance, the learning that we did, remote learning and things like that. So all those have been suspended as of this time, so.
How we made payroll when we didn't come back for school, what were essential staff, all those things were already in place, so we kind of had a plan to go by.
So we're looking for anything.
So, is there anyone? Public input? Okay.
Thank you.
So now we're moving to consider our selection of auditor for the 2022 year, 2023 school year.
And so we have used IDB Bailey for several years. They are very familiar with our business office. They, it's a very efficient process. In the, this year, their fee that they're asking is $39,500. They say there's a possibility of adding up to 3,500 if they have to do an additional testing on two other groups. I don't know exactly what groups that is, but it's usually federal funding. And then, just to put it in perspective, this year we paid 38,000, so they're a little late.
Carol and Catherine still good with them?
I think, I think the good thing about continuing to use them is most of their folks have been in communication with Carol. We'll, we'll start doing some summer.
Next month?
Yeah, we'll start doing some summer. And if information flows back and forth, they know our processes, we know theirs, so it's not, it's not over or anything like that, so.
I'll make a motion to approve Ibanic from the financial audit for the 2022, '23 school year.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Carol, do you have anything you want to say?
Catherine, actually, in a former life, worked with the group that IDB Bailey bought out, so she knows the audit process.
Alright, so now we'll go on to consider approval of local policy update 121.
Probably y'all been sitting on pins and needles all night waiting for Mr. Vaughn to be the highlight of y'all's.
And our win.
It's not a big bargain clear, Mr. Vaughn.
First of all, if you know, anything you get from me is friendly to the 50-plus crowd. Those of us that approach the 60-plus crowd, still agree with us, given that plot size. Alright, local policy update 121.
Before you go further, just a reminder, Laura's here for the first time. Policy updates, there's a lot of things that go into it. Some are required updates. And then some local policy updates are optional. And so what Mr. Vaughn brings to us are only the ones that are not legally required updating our board policy. You've seen board policy before, but this is kind of the backstage area where you get approval on these local options.
And the funny thing about some of the local is, they call, they call, there's a couple of them in here, they say they're optional, but, but you're dictated that you have to set a policy like this. So even some of the, some of the locals are not as optional as.
You'd like to.
You'd like them to be, like, one I'll mention here during a little bit. So first, I will say, this, this overall is a relatively routine, not just a whole lot to this that I saw that rocked our world. So a lot of things, just clarification, wording changes. The first one, CFD vocal accounting inventories, says language is added that states a superintendent shall determine the capitalization threshold of a group of assets. Basically, there's a threshold of $5,000 for capitalization of an individual asset. He now has the obligation if needed to set that for a group of assets. That made a tremendous amount of sense to me, so I went and asked those ladies. They said, if y'all have any questions, I can look over here. So if y'all have any questions, just go and look right over there.
Like if you had, you wanna say your technology, set that aside, like, our technology, we want to capitalize for every 6,000, but your overall policy is the 5. If there's something different, he has the right locally to change that in those policies. But you, I really think, as long as you could defend your group, you can have it, I would say group is a broad term, but as long as it's consistent, you could set aside a group. But typically, you just do one.
Okay, the next one, this is just, this is just an update in far as cross referencing to legal. And the security personnel, just referring to the legal, there's really not, nothing much to that, just some changes and some cross referencing. In CLD, local buildings ground equipment maintenance, this also now includes district-owned residential property, which we don't have any district-owned residential property, but if we ever do, then it will also fall under the integrated pest management program. So that's just an example of how routine some of these can really be. COA, local food and nutrition management, this policy extends a student's grace period to an unlimited amount of time that they are allowed to receive a meal if their account has been exhausted or they go into debt. And to tell you the truth, this is one where policy's kind of catching up to practice. We've, we've never had a kid where we've denied them something to eat, even if, you know, they're $25, $30 in the hole, whatever. We found them something, something to eat, so this now is just going in local policy. But this has been our practice. If a kid needs, needs something to eat, we make sure they get something to eat. COA, local food and nutrition management, changes this policy designates that the food service director, that term used to say superintendent, has the authority to apply for a G. for geographic preference when procuring certain products. CRF, local insurance and annuities management, this, basically, they reviewed the policy and only changes the date of review. They didn't see any need to change this. CVA and CVB, local facilities construction, in this, they had the term designated to be eliminated from these policies because brand policy VJA already gives the superintendent the authority to delegate the preparations for bidding, so it was, it was redundant, so they removed that term. DEA, local compensation benefits, wording is changed for employee pay from bi-monthly to semi-monthly. And there are additional wording changes just for clarification purposes only. FD, local admissions, there's a wording change in the proof of residency, or proof of residency section, but also the district must adopt a policy that assures a homeless student or student in substitute care of the credits that they will receive prior to enrollment. This is the one where there's a little bit of a poser to us, because I would say, it could, it could, you know, we're required no matter where they, where they come from to enroll a homeless kid. They don't necessarily have to be in our district. But this says before you can enroll, you've got to ensure them of exactly what credits they're going to be receiving. So that's a, that can be a little bit, if a kid shows up without anything, exactly what credits you're going to give them if they don't have enough information, it's going to be kind of hard to enroll, but then we have law that says you got to enroll. But this is one of those where, but, but legally, they said you've got to establish a local policy that ensures them that they have this. So we really don't have, if it's a local policy, we don't have a lot of option. I can tell you, as I've talked to Crystal Noble, who's, who's our lead counselor, she's going to trainings this, this summer to, to learn specifics on the, on the enrollment and the credits of, of homeless kids and kids in foster care. So we'll understand that a little better. So, so there is a, a little bit of a, a little bit of a challenge in understanding that one, but we've got to have a policy that states that. So, so this is asking you to approve a policy that we're still kind of trying to wrap ourselves around just a little bit. The last thing, some additions to the student welfare, the freedom from bullying, says a superintendent must establish administrative procedures that assure minimum standards for bullying prevention are met. We have, each campus has, has their procedures for, for making sure we're addressing the bullying standards. And then the, the second thing that was added, superintendent must periodically monitor the reported counts of bullying incidents. Case, you know, we discovered, hey, we got one campus with forty-two bullying incidents and the rest of them just have two or three. We might not look at what's happening on that campus, so, so that would be the reason for monitoring. So, nothing too earth shattering there. Do y'all have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to adopt and approve the local policies updates, one twenty-one?
I'll say.
All in favor? And moving on to considering early increase.
These credit limits, yes. So this spring, we started having problems with our credit card limit being broke. What, 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 I'm trying to say is that they exceeded the credit limit. And so trying to figure out why, are we spending that much more money? And what the big issue has been are hotels. In the spring, we were traveling a lot, nobody will take checks anymore. And so they came to me and said, what, what do we want to do here? And I, we kind of postponed this for about a month, but the, the credit card company requires y'all to establish the credit limit. I couldn't do that. So we're coming to you tonight and we think twenty-five thousand additional dollars on our limit. We're at fifty. We think twenty-five should cover it. We haven't really had any problems, I mean, say there are no problems. We have to work reconciling our credit card accounts every month. And these ladies work hard at doing that, just making sure they get all the paperwork back in. And so, but other than that, the credit cards are just the way things are going down. And so we would recommend that we increase that limit to seventy-five thousand. Is that what you need, Catherine?
Okay.
Why we'll make that motion that we increase our credit limit on the district's foster bank basis to seventy-five thousand.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
Okay. That'll make you happy.
That's kind of her first.
Okay. Some of our meetings and workshops.
So y'all know our standard workshops and meetings. The question is, in July, with discussion we had at our workshop, what, what are our thoughts right now? It sounds to me like, and I might ask for some input from Jackie, where, you know, of course, we'll have, the, the budget portion will be longer this next time, because we, number one, I think we're going to have more information on revenue. I may be wrong, but expenditures just takes longer than revenue. So that's going to take longer, but I, I don't think we're going to have our survey back by July tenth. Is that what she was saying?
I don't know.
It was, I felt a little bit foggy about.
She was, she said, like, she's on it tonight.
She said she was on it tonight, but then earlier she had said that the guy's leaving tomorrow for Europe. So I was a little foggy on how quick we can get more information. Now, if y'all tell me we, we just want to focus on, you know, all the different components of, other than the big items, we could do that. And in the length of time, you know, I don't know, I don't know that we need, seemed like we had plenty of time to do everything and, and Ronna took a good bit of time. So it depends kind of on where y'all want to go as far as before the, we get to, you know, really the scary thing is the next meeting's August.
Yeah.
And that's.
I wasn't the person that we needed to meet again at the end of July though.
That's what I was thinking too.
Okay, so, so, and I do think that that's, she, she did say that July tenth wouldn't be ready.
So I.
I would like to meet on the tenth again at a time to kind of go a little bit more, to make sure we're all on the same page with what we're looking at, what we're asking for, what we're going, what direction we're going. That way we can have a pretty fine two, three to roll, you know? Yeah, I would, I would, and I would be okay meeting at four or four-thirty. I mean, four gave us plenty of time, but if we're going to spend more time on the budget.
Yeah. So, so make sure I understand what that, in that workshop, when we're asking to, to narrow that down, I guess I need a little more direction and I, is it campus by campus you walk through, is it a?
For me it is. I don't know, I'm not y'all, but for me it is.
I think kind of when we were talking about right before you, you know, you maybe getting with the principals again and making sure that list that was done last spring is accurate or needs something else need to be added or whatever, and then bring that to us during that time.
Yeah, just revisit, revisit that list, make sure nothing has changed and add the improvements or the changes and make sure that our numbers are where they are.
So do that and if we don't have, she said, you know, the survey results would help us pare down what needs to be, what our community would.
Community support.
Would support. So do you want to talk about the campus things on that June tenth and then?
Yeah, I guess it would depend what happens with the survey. I mean, it would come, it sounds to me like.
Call another meeting in, at the end of July.
Yeah, so, so I would say that that's a definite possibility that we would have another workshop, possibly midway between the, the July and August, or maybe even closer to the August for the meeting. And I think it depends on how quickly we're able to do the surveys and whether we have.
And she said, she said the survey took, I don't know, she said it was like a three-day survey?
She said three days.
But then she said results took three weeks.
It was how many people?
Yeah, and then you could get on your phone or had to go, she was real fishy.
You're right. I didn't.
Two days to evaluate.
Well, it had to do with the amount of, like, voters you had, like, you, like, like a standard that you did. If there were, there were close to twenty thousand, you could do them by phone, but if there were less, you had to do mailouts too, something like that.
Oh, that's.
Yeah.
So she thought that would give you the cell phone route, send it out to register the voters. It's like a three-day survey, it takes two, three weeks to get the results.
Yeah, and, and now I think what I heard her say was that even that is, they're going to target a sample pool. They're not going to necessarily send it out to everybody. They're going to be very targeted. So I don't know, you know, those folks know the science, so they'll tell us all that, but I don't think it'll be everybody in the district against that. So we, what we'll do is we'll plan on, well, I think, go ahead, obviously, why don't we
just do the budget, whole portion of everything on the tenth, and then the updates, the upgrades and renovations plus the survey results later on in July. So let's make a workshop out of that.
So not do anything.
He was wanting to do it for, yeah.
Well, I mean, I.
I'll be honest, I'll be very candid, I'm not comfortable with any iota calling a bond right now on August fourteenth without maybe a couple of more times. I feel, I still feel very gray in some areas that I don't know if one more meeting is going to do it.
No, that's okay. I'm, we're with you. We can probably get updated from the teachers and administrators for our June, July tenth meeting, and then the survey information, we'll meet again and talk more about it.
That's what I would like as well, to have it at the next meeting if it's possible, and meet at four, four-thirty, and go over those hard numbers that, this is what, this is what we've got, this is what we're going to ask for, so you better have it, you know, correct at your campus, and then we'll do more at the end of July.
I feel like that can give us a better idea what we wanted to get at. Like, if you come back with a survey and we're like, okay, well, this was our list, well, that can't happen, that, if we don't have something that we have in mind, it's hard to, yeah, it's hard to say no then.
Yeah.
So four or four-thirty?
Four.
It was four.
Four.
Didn't feel rushed today.
Yeah.
I'll take every.
Making y'all feel rushed.
I'll wear purple. I'll do my best and wear purple. You like the rush.
Yeah, that's my goal. Still uncomfortable.
Four o'clock.
Okay.
Something they need from us, from the principals?
So what's going to happen is Jackie's going to take that list. So for example, like, one of the things I know on my high school that has been a sticking point, you know, the, the lecture hall, lecture room, and we've got that built in, so that's, that's one of the, I mean, that'd be one of them, but I mean, she, the whole list of things, she'll sit down, because she's going to talk to you about the survey.
Teach them around.
Teach them around.
Survey anyways, so then we'll just review.
Okay. But y'all physically don't want to come or you all?
No, no, not to y'all.
No, we just, we just want you to make sure that that list is still what you, is still kind of your wish list.
So Jackie's going to give a summary of y'all's conversations.
Yeah, I like the ag bill. Evidently the screen footage was incorrect, so to make sure that Cody Smith is good with his number and type of things, so, yeah, things like that at all the campuses. We want y'all to get everything you possibly get, you know, if we can, if it passes, you know, if we can afford it, the community was supported, so.
Okay, so we'll, so then at the July meeting, we'll meet at four and we'll wait, or do we want to look at the meeting dates for, do we want to wait until we get some information back from?
Yeah, I would always.
So we won't set the, the meeting for the, for the, for the late July.
Okay.
Okay. So we're clear as much?
Yeah.
Four o'clock, four o'clock, July.
What kind of server are we doing?
Poor Jackie, she's like, y'all want me to do it? Don't know.
I love you, Jackie.
We're very grateful.
Very good. So we got those dates.
Okay. The Tazby Convention in Dallas.
So just, just a reminder, we kind of talked about this when we talked about the delegates and the alternate, but we meet September twenty-ninth through August first, I mean, October first, and if you would like to come and have a baby there, we would, we've got some good doctors up there.
They're all going to be like, I'm having a baby.
No, that's not. So just so y'all know, everything, we pay for everything, we pay for your travel, for your meals, for your housing, for the conference. So, and sometimes the credit card doesn't work out right and we have to reimburse.
Didn't for me.
It didn't for me.
Two years ago.
Yeah, to you, right?
Yeah.
So if it, if it doesn't work, you just pay for it, bring back your receipts and mail it out.
The big thing is you get your credit out.
And you get your credit out with your bidding, so you want to get some of those. And there's more opportunities throughout the year, so.
It's a really good time. It's very, very.
As a delegate, you get paid with extra.
No.
I guess I'm still lucky. Yeah.
Still waiting on those checks.
Okay, Pro Plan Planning Committee update.
So I wanted, I expressed this to you in the board letter, but just kind of echoing again, kind of how this process has gone, remember initially, y'all gave input on the members of the committee. We met six times starting in, when did we start? August? Uh, maybe not, I didn't think it was August, but whenever, we did that. By Christmas, we were pretty close to through, and then we, we came back to y'all with recommendations that the committee had developed in conjunction with Robert Edwain and those surveys that he did on those campuses. We brought that to y'all, we, we looked at it through some other lenses, like through Gallagher, who, by the way, I'm just thrilled, some of the input we've had in this process in regard to the other school districts they've worked with, similar projects, the timeframes, what escalation has meant to their, to those jobs, the input we've gotten from them has been tremendous. And so then we, after we did that with y'all, we actually took the same presentation and shared it with the committee, so they saw the same thing y'all did. And that was last Thursday, and, you know, I, I think that they did ask some good questions for clarification, and we sat down and talked through some of those. My hope is that when it comes to the August meeting, and, and I really think, you know, as y'all continue to focus exactly what this proposal is going to look like, then we will share it with them. I think, am I, I want to be sure that I'm being fair, that I felt like they, their ideas were, were well represented to the board, and I think with what we came back to them, for the most part, they were in agreement with that. Jackie was there, Desiree was there, Reagan. I, I think they felt good about the process so far. When y'all are ready to say, okay, this is what I feel good with, so hopefully before the August meeting, I would like to meet with them again and say, okay, this is what we're, we're doing, and this is what we're bringing. And then at that point, from my understanding, is we would then maybe, after sharing that with them, invite them, if they are interested in being part of the, for lack of a better term, a PAC, to help be on that side of things. term, a PAC, to help be on that side of things, we would invite them to do that. Jackie, any comments or thoughts? Is that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that they, they've been through the entire process and they, you know, they're going to be the ones that can go back out to the community and say, this is, this is what we want, this is what we've talked through, and hopefully, a lot of them will want to serve on the PAC.
So how, how many, how many are still actively involved? I was really surprised at how many we had on a Thursday in.
In the summer.
In the summer. At four o'clock. Uh, how, did you, she took the road. There were fifteen, I think.
Fifteen.
I mean, Laura, you were there too. I mean, is that?
And there were several that, you know, responded, wish I could be there, but can't, you know, they're still, they're still involved, they just weren't able to be there.
Gotcha.
So.
Cool. Yeah, we kicked Laura off because we thought she couldn't serve on those sides of the fence.
I did have a question and I actually asked this earlier, but hopefully it doesn't take too long, you just might not know the answer immediately. How long does it take? Have y'all already started the process of setting up the PAC or how long does that take? Is that enough time?
As far as.
Like actually.
By time August.
I'm assuming that there has to be guidelines and stuff when you set up a PAC.
Well, they haven't really talked to us about that, you know, when we did the one.
Probably because she said something early, like, is anybody here from the, whatever? And I was like, we were supposed to have that done already? That's the only reason I was like, does it, is there, like, when you're setting that up?
Like rules of engagement.
Rules of engagement, yeah, I mean, like.
Well, they're, they're, it's going to be.
They'll do all that, okay.
Yeah. We give the names and they kind of.
So they set up all the finance part and everything, all like that? Okay. That makes sense.
Cool. And I do think we'll learn a little bit, you know, when we did that, you know, we really can't get our nose under the tent on the PAC side. I mean, but, you know, we will try to make sure they have all the resources they need. And then, and then there's a lot of communication back and forth as far as what, what we're talking about. And that's why I think it's great that the folks that have been through the process as part of this team, because they can see it didn't just happen overnight. There was a lot of thought, a lot of feedback in this process and so forth. Yep. So that's where we are, but I think that's a good question. You might write that down. Because if we don't ask, we won't get the answer.
I'll take that email to yourself.
Okay. All right, moving on to TRPN.
Reagan.
So I'm presenting kind of for Laney first. I just want, the reason that we get approached at all these grants is because Mr. White really trusted me years ago to run the CTE and to do things with it and ask for forgiveness whenever I do things too big. But it helped get our district notice and so we were approached last year to be a part of a grant. We joined with Holly and Merkel and so the Region fourteen brought us and Workforce Solutions brought us all together. And it turned out great, so I'm going to tell you about that. And then they've approached us again for another department for the same grant to do it all over again, which is pretty cool. But part of the requirements presented to y'all. So, YIC was selected for the Texas Regional Pathways Network Grant in July two thousand twenty-two. This grant was given, has given YI the opportunity to partner with Workforce Solutions, Cisco College, Rintec and USG. We have to have industry partners for this, so Rintec and USG were our industry partners this past year. These partnerships have benefited us by USG donating sheet rock to our construction program and Rintec donating scrap metal to be used for welding. Cisco College conducted our welding exams for our practical students this year, which is really cool. Our students have toured the facilities of our partners, have been in contact with many of the company employees. Our partners have been strong contributors to our CTE advisory committees, which were up and running this past year. Our ag engineering program certified forty-one students with a hundred and forty different welding certifications this past year. Workforce has delivered paid internships for our four ag engineering students for this summer, which is called, it's a kind of fun. I know Catherine's been involved in asking questions like, are seniors that graduate covered by insurance? Because they're doing dangerous things on the website and, you know, really just put us in the fire, like figuring it out, which is pretty cool. The grant has brought in a full-time counselor and a half-time counselor this past year at a cost of ninety thousand dollars for a program called Root Ed. These counselors work specifically with students on FAFSA scholarships and career and college pathways after high school. So they took the load, they basically became senior advisors. And so all the college and career planning for seniors, they took that on and they had a goal to meet with every senior three times. And they really knocked some stuff out of the park for us. Workforce has delivered paid internships. Already said that. These counselors work specifically with those students. The grant also paid twenty-five thousand dollars worth of equipment for our ag engineering department. The equipment includes five commed welders, twelve stick welders, a grinder bench, a cutting saw, twenty welding hoods, hydraulic pump and a bin tester, which is all industry approved, which is why we have those partnerships, so that they're working in the classroom with exactly what Rintec and USG are using on their site. With the student success of the grant so far, based on the data collected this year, TRPN has decided to extend the grant for next school year. This means that we'll continue to have our paid counselors, our senior advisors for another year. The grant will also provide YI with a program called Career Craft for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four and the following school year. So what this program will do is right now, we really have, we don't have a great way of tracking CCMR, which that's what brings in our bonus outcome. We don't have a great way of tracking that. This year, it was me pulling, the TEA data lacks eighteen months. It's so long. And so, it's me pulling that and then me and Laney and I dividing up and looking at transcripts to see if they've gotten their CCMR point from that. The other thing that the grant paid for this past year is Miss Warner did a great job before her passing of us becoming a TSI testing site. And because that's one of the ways to get bonus outcomes, but it's also a college readiness exam. And so the grant paid for a curriculum that reviewed students. So we pulled all those students that didn't have, all the seniors that didn't have a CCMR point, they went through this review curriculum and then they all sat for the TSI test. So every single senior had an opportunity to get a CCMR point, which has never been done before. So we hope to see that amount of money increased whenever we get that bonus outcome. So along with that, it's going to pay for this program called Career Craft, which will be a way to track our CTE and our CCMR data for the district if you call it accountability. CTE is a major player in accountability. And it gets, the expectations of CTE get higher and higher as far as those students staying in the pathway and becoming compliter status. And so this will help us track that. Right now, we have no means of tracking that other than transcripts. So we're proud of all the work put into this grant. Laney Alcorn has been incredible. Gosh, she's a go-getter. I don't know if y'all ever worked with her, but she's a go-getter. And so we look forward to continue the grant this next school year. YI is being considered for the, and I think we already got it whenever this was written, but cohort five grant and this grant this coming up year will be in our health science and our education pathways, which is really cool. So we're excited for them to see the, for them to have equipment and then also with our partnership with Kendrick and Cisco, it's going to be really cool to watch that all come to fruition.
That's awesome.
That's awesome.
Questions? Is, is this grant that you were talking about, is it like a, they look at it every year to see if they're going to renew it?
We were approached last year. It was the first time that Region fourteen qualified. They had to apply, I mean, we had to apply, we have to be part of their application. And they've been denied with other schools before, but us, Holly and Merkel had all the players, all direct players. So I'm not sure what the other school districts, if it's our same school districts this coming up year for the health science and the education, but it is just one, it's a annual grant. So I would assume they'll probably, will reapply every year and hopefully Region fourteen and Workforce Solutions will continue to include us and we'll just jump from program to program.
Good job.
Yeah, thanks.
Well, and, and you know, what Reagan, as I said about the CTE program, of course, she really put it in hyperdrive a few years ago and has made a lot of things happen. As she said, Laney has continued that and it's really been, I think, a bragging point for high school as far as all that goes for sure.
Okay. That is it? Moving to executive session?
Thank you all.
Thank you.